All right, this evening, we are going to start into our work session. We will be going over certain sections of the board manual which you all have received. Those highlighted sections we're going over. The goal this evening is just to go through any modifications that would be needed for the language after you've reviewed it. And then after we've got that done, then I'll share with you next steps for our board manual. So if you need to pull out your manual, if you need a moment to do so, please do that. Otherwise, we will get started with the first section. What I will do is read these out. I believe we have Cindy with us this evening virtually and Ms. Martino. And then I don't think AJ's with us this evening. I don't believe, okay, so we do have them with us this evening. We will start with 3.1, number four. And that is delegation to the superintendent. Number four says, "The superintendent is responsible for creating and informing the board of an emergency succession plan annually at the beginning of each fiscal year." Are we okay with this language? Or are there any modifications that you feel need to be made? Everybody else looks good? Good? Okay. We will move on to the next. It will be Section 3.4 Governance Management Connection. If you remember, this is the one that we moved from another section to put this here. It says accordingly, "The superintendent will inform referring board member of the resolution of any referred comment or complaint." And if you all remember, this was moved from... Hold my notes back up here. This was moved from Section 4.9 Board Member Code of Conduct. I believe the guidance that was provided by AJ was to take that letter E7E and to move it to this section. Everyone okay with that there? That language there? All right. We will move on to Section 3.5 Unity of Control. Number two is where we will start. It says, "If board members or committees request information or assistance for items not posted on the board agenda and without board authorization, the superintendent may refuse such requests that require, in his or her opinion, a significant amount of staff time not to exceed 15 minutes. Requests should be submitted to the superintendent and board leadership via email with requests for information included in the subject line. Requests should detail what information is requested, why the information is being requested, and the information probably that is wanted." Are we good with this language? Or do we need to make any modifications? Looks good? Okay. Number three. "Requests for information regarding an agenda item for the upcoming board meeting must be submitted by noon on Thursday before the Tuesday board meeting. If the information cannot be gathered before the Tuesday board meeting, it will be sent out to the entire board prior to the next meeting." Everything looks good there for you all? Okay. Let's go down to 3.6 Superintendent Accountability and Performance. Letter I, it says, "The superintendent will be responsible for developing, implementing, and maintaining a data-informed professional learning plan on a yearly cycle to address growth areas as identified by assessment tools." Looks good? All right, next section would be 4.5 Board Job Responsibilities. We added some things here, so letter B, C, and D has been added. I will just read number one. It says, "The board will monitor student outcomes, outcome-focused goals, and guardrails and will fulfill any statutory or other external mandates imposed upon it by law, rule, regulation, or contract." And then B, C, and D is what has been added here. "The board will update the community on an annual basis on the performance of the school system relative to the goals and guardrails." Letter C reads, "The board will receive input from the community at least every three years, which will inform the goal-setting process." D would be, "The board will review board-approved goals every three years with the intention to keep, modify, or delete stated goals." Any modifications to the language that you see there for Section 4.5? Looks good? Okay. Then let's go down to 4.9. We have just a few here on that section. And I'll start with F and B. It says, "Former board members shall not be eligible for employment or business employment contracts with DMPS for a period of six months after having left the board." You okay with that? All right, and then down to number five. B, C, and D, this is added language from Board Member Communication with DMPS Staff. We have, "If board members are contacted by DMPS staff without the permission of the superintendent, board members will follow the board policy, board member communications with owners/community members." Letter C states, "Board members will contact the superintendent concerning contact from a DMPS staff member if the communication pertains to financial well-being of the district, anyone bringing physical harm to themselves, staff and/or students, and any other concerns that would put the district in jeopardy." Letter D, "If contact from a staff member implicates the superintendent in any way, board members will need to first share information with the board chair. The board chair will reach out to district legal counsel for next steps." Just a note for letter D, I reached out to Miriam for the order in which that should happen, so those were the direct steps that she gave if there was anything that would implicate the superintendent. Everything looks good there? Great, let's go down to number seven. Item E, F, and G. These are things that we've added concerning email. It says, "When the board receives an email, board leadership will respond to the email and send a copy of the response to the board. If board members have any questions about the response, they are directed to reach out to board leadership. When a board member receives a personal email requiring district response, the board member will copy board leadership and superintendent in the email reply. Board members shall use reasonable judgment when posting and replying on social media." Just to give a little context to letter F, when a board member receives a personal email regarding district response, so if you get an email, that may, some say, anything that's directly tied to the district. So maybe someone writes you about an issue that their student had in the classroom, or maybe there's a question about maybe operations or something like that. If it's related to the district, we ask that you would copy board leadership and superintendent. But if someone is writing you to say, "Ms. Marie, you're doing a wonderful job. I just want to tell you to keep up the good work," or "I'm inviting you to come to an organizational meeting or something that we're having," those you wouldn't need to include board leadership in that response. But that's just kind of a little explanation on that. So feel free, if you want to modify anything there. This whole email thing is new for us because we haven't really had anything pertaining to kind of how we answer those emails and how we do those. So would love to hear from you all if you think maybe there's something else that we could put in there that would make things be a little bit more succinct.
So I'm just going to surface a concern regarding that. I feel like we spent some really great time talking about our role as board members and helping community members navigate the system, right? If you have an issue, encouraging them to follow the steps. And when people send a personal email to a board member, my concern is that they're writing to you potentially for advice on... It could be our redirection, right? So have you followed the steps? This is where you should go first. Have you done that? And I'm not really sure that that is appropriate at that level to engage the superintendent and board leadership. Because if a teacher were to ask, send an email and about a concern, we'd direct them to the process. And so I just feel like you're making their personal contents public at a point where it doesn't need to be. So maybe I'm reading it wrong or hearing it wrong. I'm just wondering how other people are interpreting this. But I thought we put some faith in that board member communication with owners/community members. That kind of lays out the chain of command and how we help people navigate their steps.
So two things I'd like to hear from, how others are interpreting that same thing. And then also, if we are interpreting that differently, if there's some other language that might bring some better clarity so that we actually understand that process.
I'm just trying to respect the privacy of individuals while simultaneously... I don't know. I just, I worry about outing them straight to the superintendent.
So I think most of the emails that I've received, for the majority, are normally from community members. I don't, I don't receive, so it might be different for each of us here at the table. I don't receive a lot of emails from teachers or staff per se. But I might get an email from someone that might say, "I'm reaching out to you because I had this issue within my school," or "I went to this person and they didn't answer my things. And so for me, what I've done with those emails is I do say, you know, thank you for reaching out to me, and I do hear your concern. I am going to copy the superintendent in so that he can, he or she can get you to the next best person." So that's when I've used those kinds of things. But I don't normally get a lot of emails from staff. So then it might be different for board members if that's the case, if you think that that language needs to be switched up. But I would first like to hear how you all are interpreting that so that we could kind of maybe talk through what would be next best language for that.
And it's interesting, just on that point, I'd say, because we still don't have a formal email protocol. Like, should that response that you just talked about, which I've done too, sending it straight to the superintendent? There's a part of me that wonders if I should have actually said, "Hey, first, have you talked to your building level leader?" Like, so I'm just wondering if we actually all need to get on the same... If that's how we're being coached, which is make sure they know how to advocate for themselves through the system. And then when they hit a block, they come to us and the superintendent gets engaged. Should we be doing the same thing on email?
Right.
Just for consistency.
Yes, I can say, yes. It's so nuanced because it just depends on the situation. But there have been some situations of, hey, I have this question, and who do I talk to within the district? I would have no way of knowing that. So then, of course, I'm going to send that on to the superintendent to better answer that question and direction. I'm trying to think of the instances where it may come up. And sometimes we'll have folks who will not send to the full general board email, but will send to each of us individually. And so...
The same email?
The same email. And so whether that, I don't know. I mean, typically, it would make sense to me, like, as I read it, I would say, okay, if it requires a district response, something in that, whatever that message is, tells me they really are asking a question, they want to know who to direct it to, to who to direct it to. I would say that would make sense to send it to the superintendent. But also hearing your concerns of when is there kind of the guiding them through the process, and how do we do that? And what does that mean? And so it's a weird nuance depending on a situation. And I'm trying to think of those off the top of my head, and I, nothing's reflecting right now.
Well, and then I think Superintendent Smith, about that one, which was a community complaint about something around the school building. And you had said, "We'll have them go to the complaint, you know, fill out the complaint form." So I'm just wondering if we don't have a standard operating procedure? I don't, I don't know if we feel...
No, this has been very challenging on the email thing because ideally, what we really would have loved to happen is saying that, like, if some of these emails could have been funneled to Ms. Rosie, and then she could have looked at some of them and said, "Okay, this isn't even a board thing. This should go directly here." But Kim, I know you, I know you've been back and forth with technology a lot. Do you kind of want to speak to that? Because I feel like we, we've been trying to find something that's a little more orderly. It's just very challenging because of the variety of emails that we may get. Sometimes it's duplicative of all of us getting the same email but being emailed individually. Or we get this email that is just bored, and we all see it. So it's, we, we get different layers of it, so it makes it a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, I've been working with the technology team for months now to try and come up with a solution to the, when community members email the board email and have a solution that doesn't violate our our public meetings laws. And I'm currently testing one of the last solutions that they recommended, which I don't want to go into too much detail because honestly, I don't know at this point if it's really going to be what we want it to be. It would be a solution, but it would create a considerable amount of work and extra steps on all of our beheads to ensure that the communication is viewable by all without violating law. So know that I'm continuing to work with the technology team on this. We've not come up with a solution that both meets our security requirements as well as the requirements we have under Iowa state law, but we're still working on it.
Can I just understand, what are we trying to solve for? Is this a hypothetical situation that a board member may go rogue and speak on behalf of the district in an email? Although that violates a policy that we have written previously. So like, what, what are we trying to solve for to maybe figure out if this is the right language or not the right language?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing, the concern of was like, it's like, what do we do with the emails? You know, because either we would get an all-board email, and it's always like, who's going first? Like, who's going to respond to that? And I think common practice has just kind of been, any board member might jump in and answer that email. And, you know, we leave it at that. And I think now, it's just like, we've always known, we kind of need an order of how we do that. Like, okay, so if it's to the board, you know, board leadership could answer that. But then what happens when, and this has been my frustration in the past, is what happens when we all get the same email from the same person, but we don't even know we're all getting the same email? And then we're responding seven different times, seven different ways. So I'm just wondering, like, how, how do we, we control that? And then is there a direct way that we want to handle answering those emails? So for example, is there exceptions? If it's a staff member, do we go back to how we respond to community members, you know, with that policy? If it's just, you know, a community member that's having issues within their building, then, you know, if I don't really know who to go to, do I just, you know, send them all to the superintendent way? Or maybe they have someone that's designated. We send it to them, and they fit to the right person. So I think there's a couple of things there that we run into with those emails.
I will just say, I think there's almost three issues in this one sentence, right? So like, one of the, one of the issues, and I, I don't know yet that Des Moines has a best practice for this, is clarity of how to log a complaint. Like, I look at some other school districts, and they actually have a, like, if this, then that, right? If you have a problem with this, then you contact this. Like, it's just a little, there's a clearer map for people, for the public to understand. So there's a, is there a clear process? This feels like this is an email process issue. And my, my only concern with this is, I don't disagree that there needs to be a process. I just worry about somebody's private email right away getting launched so high up the food chain because we're being told we have to do that when maybe the, because I'm reading this as if whenever I get an email, then I have to reply and include those three, as opposed to having the prerogative to decide if it needs to be elevated or not.
I would not interpret this at all that way. I interpret it as if that person is looking for a direct connection with the district, which is not me as superintendent, then I need to forward that on. And when I do so, I copy leadership. That's, I don't see it as...
You have to?
That I have to? Like, if it's just like somebody logging in, you know, like, feeling like, I just need to vent, I just want to share with you my frustrations.
Right.
That stays between me and that individual.
As long as that's what everybody's saying.
And that's, as long as that's what we all understand.
Right. And do we all understand it enough to where it doesn't need to be written down? I think, when I think of all of this, I think of future boards too. So I think of, you know, someone else, not, not all of us at this table imagining though, but what if it was seven new individuals looking at this? I know we can't read people's minds, but, you know, would, would they interpret it?
Could you say something like, when a board member receives a personal email that requires district assistance? Or something that nuances, you know, to your point, Kelly, we do get emails from people that are complaining and upset and venting. And you navigate them through the system, and they come back if there's still a legitimate issue, and they get elevated to the superintendent. I think, would that help a little bit soften the language but still be clear?
So then it would, when a board member receives a personal email requiring, or that requires district assistance?
So to me, it's personal, my Gmail account is personal, to me, personal, you could say individual, DM schools. But that's why I wasn't also sure where you were going, Jackie, is that someone emails me at my Gmail account, and now I'm sending it to you. That's on record. They're on record, right? That's public information, so.
So when a board member receives an email from their DMPS account?
Individual.
Yeah, from their individual DMPS account.
I just think, you know, email can get viral really fast. And I just appreciate the nuance of giving board members the latitude to decide if it needs to be elevated because they need district assistance.
I, I mean, I think it's fair to, if you want to put in, again, referring back to the process that we've...
For the community members.
That, again, if there's a, you know, financial impact or legal impact, yes, absolutely no question, it needs to be elevated, no matter where it comes to.
So would you all be good with me just adding the language that you've given this evening and sending it back to you in an email? Will that be okay? Since we know the things we want in there, I'll just make sure for letter F to add what we've talked about this evening, send it back to you, and just see if we're good with that? Okay?
Thank you.
Let's go to Section 4.0.
Did we do G? Is G, are we good with the language? And G, I'm kind of doing, um...
Now, let me tell you the, so G, no, no, you're fine. So the reasonable judgment is the language I got from Miriam, because we kind of talked about it, and she made it just a blanket statement of just reasonable judgment. So she was like, when board members are on social media, they should use reasonable judgment when opposing and replying on social media. And I don't know if anything else needs to be added that, you know, you don't speak for the board, but I just, you know, I don't know if that needs to be added in there or if we're okay with it with just that statement. Knowing that that could be different things for different people.
Right, that's where my concern is. I don't know if there's a way, because don't we say in that you're always supposed to speak positively? Or, I mean, I'm pretty sure that we referenced that earlier about representing the district in a positive way. I don't know if there's ways to take that language, because again, reasonable judgment is pretty...
I know. And maybe in there, I could just put back the reference to, I mean, our conduct or something like that, wherever that is about us representing ourselves. So maybe what I could do is just add to that.
Board Member Code of Conduct, maybe? 4.9?
I'll do that for that. 4.11 Board Member Visits to Schools. Board Members May Visit School Buildings With A Focus On Improving Student Outcomes. Number six, says Board Members Will Not Facilitate Conversations Regarding Staff Concerns. Board Members Will Not Convey The Impression That They Are Available To Fix Concerns During A Visit. If Staff Concerns Arise, Board Members Shall Follow Board Policy On Board Member Communication With Owners And Members. Any input on that? Does that look okay?
Can I just ask clarity around staff concerns? Because I'm reflecting on conversations in buildings, and there would be concerns around maybe, you know, some of the boulders, people need move to have better student outcomes. Is that, do we need to add any clarity around staff concerns? Because that, I don't think we should be walking in schools thinking everything's perfect, right? So concerns not related to education? Or I don't, I'm just, so maybe how I interpret this is that I'm not going into a building saying, hey, I want to organize your staff and have a whole session on what their concerns are. That's, because this is really that board members are not going to go in and facilitate conversations on staff concerns, point blank. Like, I'm not coming in to help organize and have a general conversation with your staff. That's how I read this, so, I mean, staff concerns are...
Concerns are going to come up when you're in the building.
Yep.
And your job is to synthesize those direct accordingly.
Yep, and I think that's where seven follows in, because then it says, while, you know, while we're not there or giving the impression we're going to fix concerns, but if those concerns arise, we're going to follow board member communication with owners and members. I think that's kind of the follow-up to six. Or initiate, maybe? I don't know. Is initiate maybe instead? I don't know if that's a softer word or...
When I read the word, can you, can you hear me? You can hear me.
But I can, I can hear you.
When I read the word facilitate, it just makes it sound like you're the one initiating, you know, the conversation. Like, you're opening up a space for this type of conversation to happen. And so perhaps, I mean, obviously, we're not going to do that. So do we need to, I don't know that I like the facilitate.
Initiate?
I think.
Engagement? I don't know.
I mean, initiate is a clear, like, statement in the sense that you are taking the initiative to convene, and, which is, maybe it's, maybe you like that because it's clear. I defer. Foster?
Is initiate okay? Fair?
Will not initiate?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think initiate works.
Will that work? Okay. Then we'll, I'll make sure to make that change for number six, 4.11, number six. That was the last section that we had. Wait, no, is there one more? Let me see. Is there, I got one more? I missed it. Oh, 412. I was getting excited. Okay. 4.12 Board Committee Principals, number six. Board Members May Be Asked To Serve On External Boards As A Representative For Des Moines Public Schools. In this role, board members will serve as a liaison to the Des Moines Public School Board of Directors but will not represent the board and/or school system. What do we think about that? I'm hearing silence. I'm thinking we're, we're, yeah, no, I, well, I was gonna, I thought you did. I was going to say, Jackie, that was a really good job. So it worked, worked well. Are we good with that? Okay. All right.
Good job, Jackie. Good job, Jackie Norris.
This was a great team.
No, yeah, thanks to everyone who provided their language into this, and thank you all for like, I know we say this is what we're supposed to do, but it still takes time. So I appreciate everyone's time that we've put into this. So what my next steps will be with this board manual is I will take... take the language here that we talked about tonight, I will say in the morning, get this out to you tomorrow so we can have it, but I'm also going to send this to legal so that, and I've already had this conversation with our legal department, so they can have their eyes on everything to make sure we're not either missing something, or no, you can't say it like that, or you need to change it and say it like this, so I will have their eyes to look on this. The plan tentatively right now would be that when we have our board retreat, so we are looking at September 13th and September 27th, those are Tuesdays, to have our board retreat, that we will go through this manual just to make sure that everyone is, that we're completely clear. You don't have any questions about anything, or you might have questions. We're just going to take one more kind of going through the board manual.
Can you give me the dates again?
September 13th and September 27th. I was going to see if you all could be, what do we have?
9.
Five, if we could, if we could start it. Those are non-board meeting dates, so seeing if we could start at five. Are they here in this room? Okay. Yes, the 13th and the 27th. 5:00 PM here. And
Just to confirm, there will be, because I'll be traveling for work on the 13th, so I'll be able to connect.
We'll work with getting, yeah, we'll get you connected virtually.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm waiting to hear back to see if AJ will be with us in person. I will be sending you out. I'm just adding this, I know that we're done with this work session, but I will be getting out kind of a what to expect to see happen in the month of September. So we kind of know what September is going to look like as a board, things we're going to be voting on, things that we're going to be having conversations about. I'll get that out to you. Just give me a couple of days, because I am dealing with some personal things, but give me a couple of days to get that sent out to you all. Just kind of an overview of what September will look like. I will take that same approach to October too, of like, so then you kind of know what the month at a glance looks like as we kind of get things going, and then I will communicate anything out to you as we have agenda planning meetings. If something comes up that wasn't in that overall update, you'll get something from me the few days after we have agenda planning. Just as a reminder, Ms. Rosie will be with us at our work sessions to keep notes for us and kind of have the minutes for us, so we know the things that we've discussed, we've talked about in any of the next steps that we will need. So I am going to adjourn this work session. Thank you all.
Real quick, Kim, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Cindy, are you there?
I am.
Oh.
Good conversation, good, good job making quick work of that.
Well, thank you both for joining us virtually this evening. Board members, thank you as well, and this meeting is adjourned.